Sounds good. All right, so good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
April meeting. Uh, Angelica, are you doing notes or Hector? So are we all set with the roll call? You have everybody listed? Or do you need to? Tonight?
Yes, I can take some notes. I know Hector's in. In between stuff like.
All right. So we have the agenda up. If I could have a motion to call the meeting to order.
Yeah, I don't really think you need a motion.
I know, but we always do it. So, okay.
So moved.
There you go. We're all set. We're calling the meeting to order. Angelica, does it make sense, given the fact that we have new folks for us to do introductions?
Yes, we can start with introductions. I can start myself. My name is Angelica Thompson, Youth Service Coordinator with Bloomfield.
I guess.
My name is.
Oh.
Go, go.
Uh, my name is Tony Harrington. I'm a town councilman for the town of Bloomfield.
Oh, welcome.
We are very happy to have you.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Uh, I'm Roger Bunker. I'm longtime resident of Bloomfield and certainly the oldest member of this particular committee, council.
My name is Stacy Thomas. I'm a sergeant with the police department. Newly assigned to the community services room.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Um, I'm Robert Wilkins, the community service officer.
I am Keisha Jones, District Coordinator, Nater of Family and Community Engagement for Bloomfield Public Schools.
Hello. Tiffany, you want to go next?
Hi, I'm Tiffany Wright, the Assistant Youth Services Coordinator and the JRB Case Manager.
Hector.
Uh, Hector Cologne, I am a parent and co-chair.
All right, so everybody. So I'm Donna Maitland Ward. I am the parent resident here in town and co-chair with Hector. So, welcome to everyone. It's great to have a full house today, or at least have to tag between my two screens to see everybody. So that's great. Angelica has the agenda up for us. And so do we have minutes from the last meeting so that we can?
Yes.
Thank you, Angelica. If you're ready to scroll, if you can let Angelica know and she'll move up to the next page.
Okay with me?
Is everybody all set with review of last month?
Yes.
Any, any questions, suggestions, edits, revisions needed? If not, is there a motion for us to approve the minutes?
So moved.
We've got a thumbs up from Hector. Is everybody in agreement to approve the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, perfect. This is a quiet group today. Not used to that. It might be because Hector's on mute. That might be it.
Did you do that?
That was unnecessary.
Oh, I don't put you on mute. It might be necessary.
All right, Hector. That's the last time for the meet this meeting, at least. All right.
We gotta meet, we gotta meet in person sometime. I mean, you know.
That would be good. Well, it's getting a little warmer. Maybe we could do something soon. Maybe next meeting. Well, I think we only have one or two more left for this term.
We just have two more, May, May and June.
And June, yeah. Okay. All right, so our agenda is up. Why don't we move on to old business? Angelica, you're up.
In terms of youth services updates, I'm just going to give an overview of what's been happening for the month. We have for our foster care support network, we currently have 14 families and 18 youth enrolled. That program is continuing to expand with youth. So that's always a good, a good thing. I know we were trying to build up our case load. So we have more younger youth that is rolling into our program. And we do have some of our older youth that will be aging out. They're going to be graduating. So it's good to have that balance, rotate and new youth to grow up with our program. In terms of youth service programs, a lot of our programs, we're focusing on drug prevention for the month of March. The Bloomfield Police Department Youth and Project 330 have been focusing on drug prevention and awareness with the students. We also have for the Project 330, which is our leadership group, they're focusing on their social issue of drug prevention. So right now they're focusing on marijuana use, alcohol, fentanyl and vaping. So they are putting together a drug prevention campaign for the community. So they're putting together a pledge form that students are pledged to be drug free because they want a drug free community. So we're working on putting together downstairs on the first floor, how we did the gallery walk, going to have an informational wall about the dangers and harmful effects of alcohol and drugs, drugs and what it does to your body. We're partnering with the leisure services. They're going to have their after school youth also adding some content to go to the walls as well. So that way we have a wall full of information on how to stay drug free and the dangers of using drugs. And we also are going to have them put together one of those, name of it, like a digital, not digital, like you have the pledge, like help us reach our goal. The students want at least 500 students to take the pledge to be drug free. So I'm in a process of finalizing a digital QR code that has a form that is attached to the document where they can fill out the pledge form. So once we reach our goal, we're going to keep, continue to fill it, fill in the thermometer. So we can hopefully reach our goal of at least 500 students by the end of fiscal year, which is June 30th. Um, I'm excited about that project because the students are kind of, they're, if they're designing, they're putting together a campaign for the community. And we do have some days planned to do some marketing for the drug prevention campaign in collaboration with some of our community events that are coming up through the end of this fiscal year. I know, um, we have, usually in the summertime, we have our parades and we have our music on the greens. We're trying to find big crowds to draw our attention and have a table set up to have this information. I do plan on having, um, some swag bags that have some shirts that have on the back with our logo and on the back it says, um, I think proud to be drug free. And then we also have some drawstring bags. We put that stuff in with our folders. The students put together, it has a lot of information on how to stay, um, drug free and the harms of all of these drugs that I mentioned and what it does to your body. The students put together, uh, so far 250 of those folders that we're going to put into these swag bags to give out to the community to spread the word, to have a drug free community. So this will be the first type of project that we are taking on for this capacity. So I hope this might be, um, a project that we do every year and expand to have our students aware of the issues and harmful effects of drugs.
Well, good.
Trying to think of creative ways to spread the information from what we usually do. In addition to programming for some youth employment, we are continuing to receive applications for the summer youth employment. Our work sites are coming along. I have expanded to a few additional work sites. I know the building department expressed interest in being on board with us and our farm also expressed interest in having a work site. I also collaborated recently with Seaberry. I'm just trying to figure out the logistics in terms of having a youth place at that work site. They do have some additional requirements due to the COVID-19 protocols for their agency. So I just have to get clearance in terms of how to proceed with, um, with that, as that particular work site. Um, in terms of applications, the last time I looked into our portal, we had about 55 applications, but every day I'm receiving more and more. So, um, by the time I log in one day, I'm quite sure we'll be surpassing probably 65 candidates to apply. Um, we do have funding for 22 slots. So the more applications we get, the harder it is to kind of narrow down on terms of which youth we are going to take and accept to the program. I have been trying to find some additional alternatives for students that are not able to, um, make it into the program due to our limited slots. I have been referring them to Blue Hill Civic Association. They do take Blue Hill residents. They do service a large capacity number. So I'm trying to find various ways for students to still get access to employment or, and help them navigate where to go if they don't get, get through our program for the summer youth employment. In addition to continuing on the trend with the drug prevention, I am collaborating with Persh to Speak. She presented, um, Ginger Cash, she presented last year to the high school. This year she's doing a parenting workshop. It is parenting through the opioid crisis and beyond. So it's a workshop for parents, professionals and teachers, which is helping, um, adults understand and science of drug use and effective communication strategies with youth on drugs and providing prevention and intervention strategies that teachers can use to help, um, educate students about drug prevention. This training is going to be on Zoom. It is Monday, April 25th. I will share the flyer too when we get towards and I'll share the flyer and I'll send out the flyer to, I would say, spread this to your colleagues. This is also another free training that we're providing to the community. I did share it with the district and I also shared it with Keisha Ma and, um, social work department. So they can share that with your staff. They're able to partake in for that presentation for this month. So we have been collaborating a lot with the school and we've been trying to piggyback off each other, keeping the trend going. I know, um, the district did put on a presentation with Dr. Gary Rule, and then I had one earlier in terms of, um, drug prevention with the Connecticut Governors Prevention Partnership. So the more information we can get to the community, hopefully it can start painting the scene that we can, um, get the information out there to our community residents. In terms of JRB, Tiffany, did you want to just give a brief update in terms of how many current cases you have and how many are closed?
Sure. Let me just fill out the monthly report. All right, so JRB currently we have four active cases, three are new. Oh wait, I'm sorry. It's one February. Angelica, you can go ahead since you have it up already.
Yes, let me, um, have on here six, six active cases for JRB and two new referrals. And they were currently last month to JRB, JRB hearings that were held for Juvenile Review Board.
Yep, and we currently had a few kids who just finished up some community service hours. We had them working in the food bank, helping out with leisure services. Um, assisting with the foster care program, getting things reorganized, spring cleaning. So it's always helpful to have an extra hand. Um, last, not last week, the week before, we actually had a group of the JRB kids collaborate with our police and youth group, and they did a community service project, making bags for the homeless shelter. Um, and then next Monday, they'll be, um, going to drop them off at Hands on Hartford, again, the opportunity to do a tour of their facility and learn a little bit more about what they do and how they service their community.
In terms of some additional youth services for spring break, we are offering a few activities during the day. We do have, as Tiffany mentioned, the Hands on Hartford activity for Monday. We do plan on taking a group to Revolution Bowling to have a fun day of bowling and video arcade gaming. And we also have the rolling laser tag, um, video truck that's coming here on the 13th. And we want to also partner with leisure services so they can partake and have their spring break students participate with that event as well. And we're also taking a group of students to see a play on April 10th. It's, um, The Whole Sold Woman, the story of Pudis Crandall and Sarah Harris. That is going to be at the University of St. Joseph's. We're taking a group of girls to that play as well. And also our final piece for youth services program, we're doing many things. We are in the process of planning our 30th anniversary event for our foster care grant. This will be 30 years that the town of Bloomfield has held this grant for the foster care support network. So we are planning on May 6th. So stay tuned for some invites to come out for that event. We're going to have it in-house here and we're trying to plan an upscale event to honor families that have been participating long-term with our program and students who have been with us for many years, different providers that have helped to collaborate with us to make this successful program and a longstanding grant that we have with the town of Bloomfield. In terms of, um, updates to, um, Roger, do you want me to have you add your piece in? I know you had a few more questions about the data that we went over last month in terms of the suspension rate. Do you want to save that to the end?
You want to save it for the end? That's fine.
Okay. Either way, it's up to you. Uh, we could do it with update.
I love this. Let's save it to the end and we can, so we can, okay.
Okay. Did anyone have any questions? Those were all my updates that we have for, um, programs that are currently happening for youth services. Donna, do you want to, want me to move on to the budget review?
Yes, please.
Trying to pull up the budget for Youth Adult Council. So currently we have our budget. Can everybody see this screen? The, the 3,000, the 2,700 remaining? We have $3,000 that was budgeted for Youth Adult Council, and so far we have spent $300. This is a combination of trunk or treat supplies for our annual trunk or treat event. I have in here a list of things. I was thinking about what we can decide on how to spend the remaining funds. I did mention to Camilla, I guess there were some conversations around the budget when I was out on leave. Some suggestions I had in terms of spending for the rest of the, the funding I had in mind, some funds to be spent for drug prevention, um, materials, allocating some funds for the high schools and to have some more community presentations that we can do digitally that we can have for the community. Let me see if I can just pull up an additional screen that had, um, spreadsheet. Can everyone see, um, Youth Adult Council budget on a Word document? Are you still through the Excel?
Excel is still up.
Okay.
Yeah.
To share. Okay. So I just drafted a few ideas of how to spend the funds. We can talk about, you know, how you want to spend the funds remaining. If you can kind of vote on what you want to do so that we have time to plan and prepare for a few things. So in terms of drug, the drug prevention campaign, there are still additional printed marketing materials that I can get for different, um, drug prevention items that we can use for our community events that are coming up. I had in mind some more apparel. I did only order 250 shirts, but if we find that we're giving away a lot of shirts, we're getting, get a lot of the information out, that might be another item that we can spend some funds on. Um, printed materials. I purchased a lot of materials on vaping because we have that grant that focuses a lot on vaping in our second drug choice of marijuana. But I can do some alcohol prevention because that's still a, a big thing for youth as well. Um, community presentation, I did mention last meeting, there is an organization, Indie Flex, that has movies on, um, mental health, which has anxious social focuses on, um, anxiety. And then they have a social media movie as well. They do offer the option where we can get the license to screen the video for either 24 hours or a week or just one day. I was opting for the week option, just in case someone don't, they're not able to meet our, um, movie screening day. They still have time to log into the link to view the video on their own. That they have two videos as the option that we can purchase funding for that. And then also the high school graduation. I have not received any group requests yet from the high school in terms of support for any of their events that they're doing. When I ballpark a thousand dollars, we can always move stuff around. So as a group with those three options, please let me know if there's anything additional that you have. If you want to take or subtract away from the dollar amount.
Just a quick question, Angelica, regarding what the high school did last year. I can't recall.
We did, um, drug prevention. I had, um, drug prevention folders that had information on vaping and we did blankets in a drawstring bag. And I think I did, um, the cups, the, um, water bottles. So we had that for the gym and the VHS.
Angelica, Angelica, for the community presentations, don't you need approval on that pretty soon if you're going to go, get them this, this spring?
Yes, because that would give me enough time to get the budget approved through the, you know, finance and to have enough time to market the movie screening. I'm trying to do stuff early. I'm thinking when I first started on, I did one on Hidden and Plain Fight. We did it in May. We didn't get a large turnout, I think, because the weather was starting to get nicer and everybody getting out of the Zoom mode. So I'm also mindful of that because, um, we have a lot of end of the year things happening for schools in terms of their events. So I'm trying to figure out what makes the most sense for spinning down the dollars before June 30th.
May I?
Oh, yeah.
Interject? Yes. I, I, I was thinking more or less waiting until the next section, but we have a council meeting tonight. So I figured I better jump in some, some kind of way. There is a, a group out of Wilson Gray YMCA in Hartford. It's called the Brother Carl Institute. They just received, uh, some state and federal dollars that they have informed me that they want to participate here in Bloomfield. Uh, I can't think of his first name, but last name is Woods. He is scheduled to be its executive director. He is also executive director of, of another organization. And he is really, really excited about trying to come out and do some work in Bloomfield. So just giving you some other possible options relative to presentations that could be provided to our.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, when you get a chance, Tony, if you can just send me over that, um, information.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Is, is that Andrew Woods?
Is that what you? Yes, I don't know why I had a brain freeze.
Okay. That sounds good.
So do we want to go ahead with the community, money for the community presentation?
Are we, so you're looking this, so we have 2,700 to spend right now. The three items that you have in front of us would, um, it's, it'll do the rest of the budget, right? It'll?
Yeah.
So you're looking, are you looking for us to make some decisions around all three items? Or tonight? Like, I'm assuming, especially with the community presentation, as Roger just shared, that's really time limited. You've got to get something sooner done. Sooner rather.
Um, with the drug prevention too, because it takes some time to order the materials to print and to get to us. So we can have time to, um, package it up to distribute out based on what activities that's coming up for, um, community event.
Okay.
So Angelica, are you looking at the full 700 for the drug prevention?
Yes.
Okay, because my understanding from what you said was you've got 250 shirts now.
Yeah.
And if we, if we're successful, you can get more. We don't know at this point in time how many more we're going to need. So that's my only question.
Yeah. Um, the only other option would be some of the materials for the, um, the folders to make. I know I ordered 250 informational packets on vape and marijuana use, um, alcohol and fentanyl. So I ordered 250 of those. They should be arriving, I think, next week from the distributors. And I have them, had them customized with our logos. So people in the community know that it's coming from social services. So, um, just takes a little bit more time because I had a few of those items personalized with our logo on it.
So if we, if we vote on that tonight and then you don't spend the money, we can decide what to do, what you don't spend at the next meet, at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. So.
It's Roger.
Well, I don't want to make the only, be the only one to make motions, uh, but I, I'm willing to move, uh, that we agree to provide the funding for the drug prevention, the community presentations.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, or opposed? Anybody opposed?
Okay.
No, sounds like we're all set with that. We have approval.
Okay. So we just have to, we'll just circle back around to see if there's any needs from the high school because we have some time for that one yet.
Okay. All right, sounds good. All right, so we are with that. Staffing?
Next thing, Youth Services Staffing Update. For our staffing updates, Camilla did present to the Town Council Committee at the budget presentation, um, in terms of requesting a full-time position for our department. This position will cover from the program coordinator that we no longer have here and the foster care support worker position that is unfulfilled. We plan on combining those two positions together. If approved for the funding, this person will start the next fiscal year, which is July 1. Um, with this full timer, it will help to cover two roles. It will recover the foster care support network piece in terms of that liaison for foster care support network in terms of managing, overseeing that piece. And also, um, it will help the difficulties we have with that grant for the foster care, filling that foster care support worker position. So this will help us fill those grant requirements of having the staff available for the whole fiscal year with a full timer. So I'm hoping they can get approved so we can, um, fulfill that piece and have a consistent staff person delegated for the foster care support network piece. And this person will also be doing youth services programming as well in addition to the foster care.
Angelica, I have a quick question, if you don't mind. Is the intent for that, well, let me rephrase. Is that position going to be open up to existing staff?
It should typically, it should be internal and then we post outside as well. So it should be posted for internal and external as well.
Okay, the only reason I ask is because then it leaves a, a gap in some of our part-time help, right? So not that I'm, not that we can disqualify people from internal folks. I'm just, I guess I have a concern that, that it leaves another, another gap, right? So that's, that's my only piece.
I know, I understand staffing is the most challenging part. Is that you gain some, then you lose some, then you start back over again. So those were all of my updates for staffing piece. Okay. Do you want to move on? Does anybody have any other questions for staffing update? Okay. Do you want to move on? Does anybody have any other questions for staffing update?
No. I think that's a great way to proceed with that role. You've had so much turnover in the way it was set up before, so hopefully this will bring some candidates that could stay for.
Yeah, the biggest thing is the hours, the way the grant is written in terms of how we're able to hire on staff, the hours are just, you know, it's just not enough to sustain someone for the summertime with the reduction of hours, and hopefully with this piece, we'll have someone that's more consistent, and we can just keep moving on forward with this position.
Great. Thank you, Angelica.
So in terms of, you want to move on to the new business?
Yeah, yeah.
So we have officially been appointed, uh, Town Council Representative Tony to be part of our Youth Adult Council Committee. I know this is something we have been expressing about having happened, and it has happened, and I'd like to welcome and introduce Tony, even though he's already spoken to give a few things, I want to formally officially, um, welcome Tony to our committee, and we welcome you, and we look forward to collaborating with you and you sharing your ideas, interests to help support our department for youth services.
Thank you, thank you. Um, hmm. I'm, I'm kinda, okay. I want to, I want to mention something that is brewing, that is developing, and and I don't want to just throw it out there, uh, but, you know, I have a council meeting that's coming up shortly, and I don't know if I'm going to be able to hang on till the end of the meeting, but I do want to say this. Uh, there is a collaboration that is being developed between the town C W P, Goodwin University. Uh, and the plan is to launch it this summer. Now, I'm, I'm kinda cautious in making that statement only because it's not done. So I don't, you know, it's like between us right now. Um, uh, it's for graduating seniors. We're looking ideally to work with sixty Bloomfield High School graduates who will, in addition to earning possible credit and college prep work, they will also earn eleven ninety per hour, which is eighty-five percent of the prevailing wage as of July first. So thirty hours. That, so it, there's a lot of nuts and bolts that are, are being put together on this, but we have the commitment of, of our town manager, uh, Alex Johnson with C W P, who is looking to extend, uh, you know, additional federal and state dollars for our community for this program, and then also Goodwin University, which, uh, we're still in the process of trying to work out all of the coursework, because it's developed like a summer bridge program, but it's being tweaked a bit to add some element of manufacturing in it. So, um, I know that's a whole lot, and I, you know, I just couldn't hold it, because this is a committee that, when it's up and going, we really need to be engaged. So I, I just felt like, uh, not throwing out a teaser, we've been working on this. It's just that we're not at the point of being able to say exactly uh, the number that will, uh, be brought into this program. We do know it's for Bloomfield students exclusively. And we do know it's going to be at Goodwin University. We have to work out elements of transportation and things of that sort to make it work, but, um, you know, we're, we're excited, and, uh, you are kinda like the first to hear about it, so I just really hope that, um, I don't confuse, because we're really at the, at the beginning stages of really putting this together, but we are excited, and, uh, we have the commitments from all the parties. It's just a matter of working all the details out.
I, I am interested in learning more about this opportunity for our students, so if you guys have anything coming up, I would love an invite.
Okay.
Great.
Absolutely. We're, we're planning to have Capital Workforce Partners uh, present to, uh, the council soon. When that happens, I will most definitely, uh, post you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's definitely something that is needed, um, from just running the summer unemployment programs to be our third summer. Every year we've had about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy-five students apply for summer unemployment. So there's definitely a need in the community for employment opportunities for our residents. So I'm excited to hear that there's some additional opportunities coming down a pipeline for our youth.
Definitely, definitely. So with that, I, I have, I apologize. Uh, but I know, uh, we're in the last phase of our budget, uh, discussions, and I just want to make sure that, you know, I have a clear head, because we're, we're, we're kinda like at the end, and I wanna, I, I don't wanna jump off too quickly, and at the same time, I want to make sure that I'm prepared adequately for, for that.
Okay, yep. Well, thank you, Tony. We won't hold you up. We'll let you get to your next meeting. Thank you for taking the time to join our meeting for this evening.
You're welcome, you're welcome, and, and thank you for inviting me. I'm excited and, uh, looking forward to it.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing you next month.
All right, thanks. Have a great evening. Okay.
Hey, exciting sounding stuff, all right.
So does anyone have any? So, okay, so yeah, moving for that, so that is some, a lot of compact, exciting information. Um, I'm excited to see what comes about that meeting and how everything forms together. The next piece for new business are committee interest forms, so this is a, something new process that they're doing for all committee members. They ask our board and commission members to complete the committee interest form. I did send it out via email to everyone for the fillable form, and it's just asking for your current information in terms of address, email address, what board or committee you want to be considered for, and experience you have, and a statement about yourself, and your interest in serving on this committee. I just asked if you can get that back to me by the fifteenth, um, so I can send it over to the town, so they can have a record for who we have currently on our committee, or interested in who's currently, um, new, new people that are interested in joining the committee as well.
Angelica, I noticed in looking at the bylaws, I'm glad we don't have to write a letter to the town council anymore. Uh, but it does say we should have at least one member under twenty-one years of age.
Yes, so I have our leadership group. I have a few members, um, few of the students for Project Three Thirty. I have them assigned to be a part of our Zoom meetings. One of the students were not able to attend this night. So I figured that would fulfill our requirement for the youth, uh, somewhat under the age of twenty-one. I try to have a committee youth to, um, participate for our committee. I'm thinking in terms of for the next fiscal year, having a different way to be on our leadership group to recruit, um, a youth under the age of twenty-one, to have at least one permanent youth, and then have a few youth that kind of rotate in from our leadership group to get that experience of, of committee meeting and what it looks like in depth, in terms of working with the community. Does anyone have any suggestions on creative ways to obtain a youth to stay with our committee for the whole fiscal year? Right now, I just have our leadership group, um, the students rotating, uh, for our meetings each month.
Yeah.
Because they do, a lot of our leadership, they do so many different activities and try to get them on stay with us for our evening meetings on top of our additional meetings.
Does the high school have anything that this meets a, you know, being a part of this committee would meet a requirement for them?
Not that I'm aware of. I know they used to have to do, um, community service hours, but with COVID, a lot of that has been waived. Um, I'm not sure, Kishma, do you know if there's any requirements for a volunteer experience that students may need in the future?
They are requiring at least ten hours of community service, again, the high school.
Okay.
So I wonder if that's maybe a way that we can, yeah, but, you know, youth from the high school, and then that gives us a true connection to the high. It, it could really.
I was gonna say. I'm gonna say, Don, you guys should probably reach out to, uh, Jesse White. He is the interim principal. Uh, I'm pretty sure that, that, you know, or at least what I'm hearing is that everything's kind of returning back to normal, and I put that in quotation. But, um, he is the interim principal, and he would be the one to probably answer that question, but I'm kinda with you. I think there's an opportunity there for there are community service requirements that the students have to, uh, to fulfill, that they might be able to fulfill that through, um, maybe even some type of rotational thing, where they have a group of students. Um, some, you know, who attend the meeting, or they go through some kind of rotation for at least maybe two or three students.
I agree with you that, that great thing would be to talk to Mr. White, because I know that some kids right now who are in their senior year, or, or even the G's are trying to find community opportunities on their application.
I'll, I'll reach out to Mr. White to see, um, I'll put together a flyer saying, you know, this is what our committee is, this is the requirement for commitment, so they know what they're, um, expected for their requirements, and, um, so I think that'd be a, a great partnership and another opportunity for youth to see and have that voice of inputting for youth services and they can kind of give us insight in terms of what some of their needs are, and that also, as I mentioned before, it helps set the foundation of what type of programs that we develop and maintain for youth services to meet the needs of the community. And also, I did forget to mention, I put together a flyer to recruit for youth adult council committee members. I'm trying to find it on my desktop to share with everyone. So trying to find ways that we can gain more members for our committee.
Mm-hmm. While you're pulling that up, we did have a discussion, uh, one of past meetings, I think when you were out on your leave, um, where, you know, Hector and I were saying we could volunteer, it doesn't have to be us, it could be Roger, to maybe go to, I don't know, P T O different meetings in order to do a presentation, or just share, see if there's questions that folks have for us to try to recruit that way. I don't, I don't know if that'll be helpful, but we do need to get more members, like, we're pretty low right now.
I think that, honestly, Don, I think that would be very helpful, because I know sometimes it's hard for me to do additional meetings, because we have our programs that we're running in the evening. It's usually just me and Tiffany rotating between our evening programs right now.
Well, I haven't been to a P T O meeting for a few hundred years. Uh, do they, I mean, how, how many people go to those?
Was the question how many go to the P T O?
How, yeah, how many, how many people show up at those meetings?
Um, it depends on which school, and it depends on which state, because some schools have a traditional P T O, and some schools have what we call a family school on partnership, where they have different committees for that P T O, and they meet separately, and, and then they all meet one time, so it just depends on which school.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I guess I would add to that, Roger, is that, you know, typically you'll get the most involvement at some of the lower level.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, some of the lower grade levels, and, and I'm sure you know where you're going, where we're going with this, once you get to the high school, it may be twenty or thirty parents, um, which is probably on the high side. Um, you know, that's, that's being an ultra-conservative number.
Right, and that's very hard, but, um, I think because we, we started to have P T Os that involve some type of training or some type of info that the parents want, so more of them are starting to come out. So like, when we, um, have the parents who have shared that they want to talk about taxes on tax season, or if they want to talk about health and wealth, well, they, um, have shared that they want to talk about, we try to have that as a P T O to share that info. But if you guys want to do anything like that, um, I, I know that Angelica says she would do a flyer, then we'll add that to our, um, P T O, um, invite, so that way they know that there'll be something at this P T O that they might want to hear.
So I guess we should consult with whoever is in charge of the various P T Os to see what their level of interest is and how that would work.
Got me right here, Mr. Rod. You got me right here. You know, I, um, I, um, get all the P T O times from all of the principals. I put all the P T O, um, times and dates into a family news, the letter that I share with the families the first of every month.
Okay.
Need more info, then they reach out to the principals.
And does each P T O have a chair or something like that?
Yes, they do have a chair, but they do have a chair, and our principals attend, and all the, um, all the enrichment, all the enrichment staff that, that I have at schools attend to.
So we, we could ask the, the leadership of the P P, P T Os, we could tell them that use, you know, use the, the flyer as who we are, and we, we would like greater participation from the commu, from the community, and would they be interested in having one of us come and give a five-minute or ten-minute presentation?
Um, I think what I suggest is that we tell them that they're going to come do a five to ten-minute presentation, um, and we add that to their P T O time and share the flyer with families. Let's not make it optional.
Can everyone see this flyer on your screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Flier be suitable for what you mentioned for the P T O in terms of recruiting participants, as states are a mission on here, and what benefit it has for being a member for the Youth Adult Council Committee, with something like this be in line?
Yes.
I agree with Mrs. Jones. We don't give them the option. We, we invite ourselves, and we, we, you know, tell them what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Yeah, the flyer looks great, Angelica.
Oh, thank you. So, Kishma, I can share this flyer with you? Um, for?
And if you share it with me by this true, by tomorrow, I can go and put it in, better than that. I plan to send out Thursday night.
Okay, so once I get off this meeting, I'm gonna share this flyer with you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll put it in, uh, is PDF good, or do you need a JPEG?
It's fine.
I'm sharing this. So we have completed the section for new business.
Yep.
I want to, um, does anybody have anything else to finalize our conversation in regards to the P T O piece? So action steps, I'm gonna send over Kishma the flyer, and then she can work on getting that posted and, um, as a way to get some recruits as well, and then figuring out the best way to present to the P T O meetings for our recruitment, for involvement for our committee. I want to circle back to our earlier conversation. Roger wanted to, yeah, some few, um, things that she wanted to pull up in terms of our last conversation we had last month on the suspension and expulsion rates, the data that we went over that was received from the district.
Yeah, I don't have anything to pull up. I have about, uh, almost a dozen, just comments. Angelica sent me, uh, information on discipline, uh, and, and, and references or referrals to other places, others, other official sources. And I don't, I still don't have good information breakdowns on inside suspensions versus outside suspensions versus expulsions. And obviously, between being an inside suspension and expulsion, there's a lot of difference of, of the seriousness of what happened. And obviously between being an inside suspension and expulsion, there's a lot of difference of, of the seriousness of what happened or how many times it happened. But just general comments, Bloomfield District overall has a decreasing number of incidents. The most frequent incidents are physical, verbal confrontation and fighting. Uh, fortunately, we've had no weapons in, it, it, uh, no weapons incidents since seventeen eight, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. We have relatively low percentage of, of sexually related behaviors relative to the, the, the average for the state. Um, CAMHS is high in the number of confrontations. Ninth grade is highest in suspensions. There's a major increase of incidents in suspensions from sixth to seventh grade and seventh to tenth grade are the ones that have the most. There's the, there's no recent good data because of COVID. So, uh, most of the stuff I've been looking at. Ends in the year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, because if you're not in school, uh, the numbers are going to be different. Students with disabilities incidents increased during that period of time from, um. So that, that, that's a concern to me and that's one of my particular interests. There's a particular class that did very well. You could, you could see in sophomore, junior and senior years, their incidences were, incidences were down. Um, from other, other years. Uh, so it was one group of pretty good kids that probably went through, went through the high school of easier kids. And that's really about, that's really what, that, you know, after taking a, a, a relatively quick look at the data. That's pretty much what I've, uh, come up with, but I thought would be of interest. Uh, I was wondering, do, does JR B keep track of school referrals? And what they were for and what, um. Penalties or consequences the school, um, imposed prior to sending them to JR B? Uh, that's just a question.
We do keep track of where the referrals come from, but. We don't specifically keep track of exactly what it was for.
Okay. Okay, um, and I, on a different, uh, I don't know if anybody has any questions about what I just said. If not, I just got one additional issue. We had talked about, um. School, uh, resource officers and then we haven't had any for, uh, I forgot what Officer Wilkins said, maybe two thousand sixteen or two thousand eighteen. But the Bloomfield High School has its own security group. And I'm just wondering how, if anybody knows how that works. That, you know, and, and, um. I'm just, just curious. Hector and I had had a sh- short conversation about that and, you know. And I, I don't know, maybe each school has its own security, but I don't know how that is, um. How that's managed or what the, the policies are. So I may be looking into that at some point. And I think, yeah.
This is Hector. I'm sorry. Just one comment to everything you were saying there, and I think this is important to kind of point out, right? Um, we kept harping on, uh, I guess what I would refer to as like the middle school, like the seventh, eighth grade of CAMHS. And then ninth grade for the, for the Bloomfield High School. I think it's important to point out that that is a transition point. You know, you're going from Bloomfield. And I can't compare it to other districts, right? I can tell you with respect to the district as a parent, I've noticed. There are a number of transition points with leadership changes, right? You in, in CAMHS alone, there are two principals. Um, and I realize it's based on, you know, two different, you know, two different sets of grades, fifth, sixth versus seventh, eighth. But they are in the same building. So that is, but it's, it's still a transition point. And then you get those same students who are. You know, might have be having some issues at the seventh, eighth and move up to the high school. And again, another transition point. Uh, so another opportunity to maybe test the waters. So I think that's. That's important to kind of point out and, you know, and add to the commentary that you were just, uh, saying there. The second piece I would add. Uh, with respect to security, my understanding and I, and I guess I'm gonna lead toward you, Officer Wilkins, to, to make sure I understand correctly. The head of security at the high school, the school is a former police officer, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so I, and, and that's as of this year, correct?
Correct, but I mean, he's obvious, he doesn't have any, um, police powers in terms of arrest, but he is a retired Bloomfield police officer, correct?
Awesome. And my only point, uh, purpose for pointing that out, Roger, is that I think, correct, he may not have, uh, you know, arresting powers. But it's somebody who is directly related to, within a very recent timeframe with police and understand. The dynamic between behavior in the high school and the consequences associated with it. So. You know, I, I can't speak to what the results are this year. I'm, I'm not quite sure, um. But you do bring up some alarming pieces there and, and the fact that we do now have. A former officer, a very former recent officer in the high school. So. I'm kind of anxious to see what's gonna happen next year, right? What, you know, I realize they're more towards. Uh, prevention as opposed to display reaction, but I, I'm kind of interested to see how that impacts, uh, whatever result we see next year.
And he's, he's also, he was the last SRO that was in the high school before he retired, so.
No, okay.
Even better.
Yeah, I, I guess what I'm curious about and like pursue going forward is. What the policies and what, you know, what the, wha- what these people who are doing now, security in the high school or in the middle school. Are, what, what's their job description look like? Um, and I, I can pursue that. I don't need, I don't need to do it, I think. Well, actually, I don't know whether Ms. Jones could help me or not, but, uh, there must be some written. Where's, you know, job, job description or policy and procedures for. Security in the high school, in the high school and whatever other schools we have that have their own security groups.
So with that question, you might want to go to Malletti, the former Bloomfield High School principal and that's since he's now the head of HR. And you can also ask Ms. McCann, the chief academic officer.
Okay. So when did that happen? I wasn't aware of that until I heard that Ms., that Mr. White was, uh, entered, was acting principal.
As of Monday.
Oh, okay, that's, all right, thank you. So I'm done unless anybody has any question. Or comments. Thanks, Hector.
If I could, uh, just for a minute, um, just speaking about the security officers and the SROs in the school. Uh, I think it's, um, important just to point out, I'm, I was an SRO in my, my former department. Uh, working with the West Hartford School System. Um, and noticing just some similar incidents or. Places where officers or departments, uh, kind of got into a gray area and there were issues or problems with officers being in the schools. Um, typically, security groups for schools. Their primary function would be to enforce whatever school policy or school rules, uh, that that school or that district has. Officers. The program runs, officers should not be getting involved in school policy, school rules. Uh, that's usually left to the security officers. Uh, an officer would, an SRO would be involved if a breach of law has occurred. Or if there's going to be like a teaching moment. So then you have a lot of SRS who teach, uh, either civics or. Search and seizure laws or just hold, uh, questions around for the students. But as far as enforcing school policy or school rules, that's usually left to security officers. Which in my opinion is probably the best route to go. Um, I'm not exactly sure how it works in Bloomfield yet, but I'm going to assume it has to be similar to that. Typically, you're not gonna have a police department get involved with enforcing school rules and school policies. That's just, it leads to bad places.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger, for that insight in terms of diving deeper into that data that was presented to you.
Yeah, that's really helpful. That was a lot of information too. So being able to summarize it that way is really helpful.
Good.
Donna, do you want to move on to our other business and announcement?
Yes. Does anyone have anything?
Yes, Don, this is, uh, Don Crocker. Hello, everyone. I'm going to be doing with, uh, through the lines of Bloomfield's children, we're gonna be doing a, um. A community-based initiative, um, in regards to advocating and advancing policies. For equity, um, equitable outcomes, um, for fatherhood and any other area of, of community involvement. And we'll be doing this probably in the month of. May. So I'll, I'll give you, I'll, um, get some other flyers out to you and it'll be. Facilitated by Dr. Roger and Randy McCray. From New Haven. So, um, yeah, we'll, we'll, we're putting that together now. So. And, and our primary audience is gonna be fathers, but we will invite, uh, others, um, if there's room for it. So. This is gonna be called out to the fathers in our community, in the Bloomfield community.
Yes, Bloomfield, huh?
Yes. So I'll, I'll get, um, some, some additional information.
Mr. Crocker, just, just a point of clarification. When we say fathers, when we say grandparents, grandparents, those kind of people, are we talking about strictly fathers like biological? Fathers?
No, 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 absolutely no. Um, let's say, uh, men, we're gonna call out for men. Um, uh, we want our, our women to come too, but we found that our fathers or our men are not as engaged. Is they should be in the, um, in our community politics.
Awesome. Thank you for, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah. Thank you, Don.
Thanks, that sounds great.
Yeah, and then I can, um, share that, Don. If you send a flyer, I can send it through our email distribution list as well.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to share the flyer that I have put together for our presentation for the Parenting One-O-One. So this is their double dose prevention. So it's gonna be two speakers. This, uh, founder Ginger Katz and Carlos. Will be facilitating this piece on, um, substance use disorder and addiction. So this flyer will go through our Costa Contact, um, distribution list. I did send it out to Kishma as well and to Leisure Services to share on their email distribution list as well.
It looks really good.
Thank you. Takes a, a lot of time making these flyers, but I figure if they're eye-catching, people will. Tune in and read it and hopefully participate.
Anyone else? Thank you, Angelica.
You're welcome.
Wow, seven oh five, this might be record speed. Okay, so it sounds like we don't have any additional topics, no public, no public comments. Let's make sure we. So I think we have one guest tonight, right? Is that what you said in the beginning? All right, nothing that, okay, so we won't hold you up. Um, do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm moved. I'll second.
All right, everybody in agreement. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.